Hi, I'm Senator Adam Oli and I appreciate you coming out. It's April 21st on my legislative town hall here in Hamtramck. Really grateful that folks came out. I hope you enjoy the information that we're going to put out today as we talk about all the things going on here in the city. And I'm very happy to answer questions and to kind of talk through those things. And I appreciate you coming out on what is maybe the most beautiful afternoon day in a long time. I mean, you know, it's snowing on Monday and it's a beautiful sunny day on Thursday. So I appreciate y'all coming and hanging out with me when everything in your soul probably says, "Go run around at the park," which is what my kids are doing right now. But yeah, brother, I know you had a question.
Yeah, I was just listening and being supportive. I was curious about specifically the body cam footage issue that people have. They have body cam footage, but it still comes out, you know, missing and not working.
Yeah, so what is being said is the body cam comes on, but if you hold it down for an extended period of time, that's how you turn it off. And so what they are saying is that while they were engaged in the struggle or whatever, that there was consistent pressure when he was, you know, behind him that turned off the camera. And so that's what the police are saying is the reason that his footage went off. But, well, I mean, I imagine they were not expecting it to be in this situation. But that's why we have to talk about technology, right? And so, you know, there is this whole discussion that we are having as a community about the usage of technology, right? So if I said to you, "Who wants cameras on every street, on every block looking out?" Anybody? Fahrenheit 911, you know, we doing the 451, Big Brother style. You sure you don't want the cameras?
I'm sure.
It works in London, right? Like they have cameras everywhere. You can kind of pull up the footage. It's like those TV detective shows where you're like, "All right, who did it?" And it's like, you know, when we have little kid, you know, and when my kids are grown, all the detective shows are just going to be them looking at closed circuit cameras. And like, "Well, they did it right here and here's the timestamp, guilty." Right? Like, but that's what you saw and you saw Graham. I think we should all recognize that Grand Rapids Police did an incredible job of releasing footage, right? So they stitched together the cell phone camera from the passenger with the ring or doorbell camera from a security camera from across the street to put together those moments. But that's only all possible because of the footage. Patrick was murdered at the beginning of the month. You saw outcry at the end of the month because there was footage and you got a chance to hear, not, "Oh, well, there was a struggle and he was fearing for his life." You got a chance to see a man, and y'all may or may not know this, but I do jiu-jitsu, right? So I do Brazilian jiu-jitsu. It's mine. It's a thing I love to do, right? And one of the most dominant positions you can ever have, and you know, I know there's some folks that wrestle this, when you have someone's back and you are in control, and that's literally where the officer was, right? So he was in enough control and in a stable enough position that he was able to hold him down with one hand and reach behind his back and unholster his firearm and pull it out and fire it cleanly in the back of his head. And that's really seeing something, right? And those are the kind of things that we have to talk about. For all of you who do it or maybe don't know, I'm a captain of the United States Armed Reserves. And every year we have to do training about how we use what we call the rules of engagement and rule of law and the kind of international law and how we engage with folks. So imagine that y'all are my team, right? So it is our job to clear the library. Imagine there is someone from ISIS over there behind the stacks and he's literally shooting at us. He's got all those things. He's literally shooting at us. Did you know that the moment he throws his weapon down, you can't shoot him? Did you know that? If you're a soldier, you can't. But a police officer may say, "Well, he might have had a knife. I was concerned that he had a..." And you can still shoot him. We haven't talked about the real kind of changes. And the police reform legislation that we have that was queued up to go doesn't come nearly close to doing those kinds of things because we know that Republicans have been unwilling to move forward on basic things like you can't use chokeholds or you can't do things that you aren't trained to do. You can't do these kinds of things. You can't use a no-knock warrant, right? Like the very basics of things. So what I'm very committed to doing is adjusting how we interact with police officers. Not from the giant big change, which we all know we need, but from the stance of, "What can we realistically do so we can realistically adjust what is a primary pullover? When do you engage? When do you follow up? How do you engage?" And to put those things in line with the kind of rules that we have in other spaces. Because an ISIS fighter shouldn't have a greater likelihood of being able to survive in an encounter with a US soldier than a police officer, than a black man with a police officer, right? And we've got to set both of them up for success. Because when my soldiers go out to do these kinds of things, they know very clearly what their left and right limit is, right? You get a weapons posture, you know? Are you locked and loaded? Are you, you know, is your magazine not loaded? Is your weapon loaded? Like all of those kinds of things are the kind of briefings that they get every time that they go out and do these spaces. Police officers don't. And we ask way, way too much of police officers in this space. And so we've got to fundamentally address both sides of that discussion. Because much like all of you, if somebody's breaking into your house, do you want the police to come?
Sometimes, I don't know these days.
I mean, but, I mean, we all call them, right? Like whether you think about it or you are concerned, if somebody's breaking into your house, he calling the police, right? Like I'm training my family to do that, you know, the daughter, kids. Like they have to be, they have to feel comfortable calling the police and knowing that they are there to support them. And we have a tremendous number of good types, the overall majority of them are. And we've got to put them in situations to be successful, which we haven't. So that was the kind of fix that we need to make. Any other questions? Nope?
No, I have a question.
Yeah?
The city of Hamtramck has financial problems and everybody knows that. And the reason why is the taxable base has dropped quite a bit. One of the solutions that was offered during the last election was to increase the mileage on property by 10.5%, something like that. And we know that if nothing happens, then eventually the courts will put in a special tax on the properties and it will be probably more than the 10 and a half mils that was proposed. Now, I spoke with the city manager and I said, "Have you ever considered the income tax increase? Because right now we're paying half a percent for residents and half a percent for people being employed in the city. Some cities are charging 1% for residents, some 1.5%, like Detroit. And the property tax would increase on average between $500 to $1,000 actually annually per property owner. Income tax, on the other hand, if it would be raised from half a percent to 1%, would increase basically between $5 and $10 per person per week, which would amount to pretty much the same result, $2 million in income for the city. Now, what I was told is that it is too difficult really to ask the state legislature to bring about that change. How difficult is it and is it possible for the state legislature to help the city in that, you know, to change their financial state?
Anything is possible, but if we're talking about likelihood, it's extremely unlikely that a Republican legislature would give any community the ability to raise taxes. And honestly, it's because it's an election year. So you talk about a thing that would be extremely difficult to get done for elected officials in a year like this. There's not that much more stuff that's going to happen new this year, right? So there are a lot of things that are going to continue to get done before the end of the year. But very few of those things would be new policies or new changes that haven't already been introduced or vanted around or kicked around. It's just, it's really unlikely.
What about the lame duck sessions?
Again, it's just very unlikely because it takes a lot of momentum to get something through. And especially something that would only be relevant for a city like Hamtramck is very unlikely.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. No, yes?
Well, I think kind of continuing off the same thread. You know, financial troubles is the name of the game for a lot of cities similar to us. We've talked about that before and I know you've addressed them as a situation. So I guess, could you give some information around what you have done in terms of giving financial situation improved in Hamtramck? But also potentially, I think it's the PA 345 is what was on the ballot that got shut down? And can you give your opinion on that and if we should try it again and that kind of stuff? Just because I know a lot of people are going to see the video.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Make sure the video came through.
So the thing that I think that I'm most proud about in my service in Hamtramck, I came in literally my first week, right? So my, I got sworn in on a Monday and Tuesday. I got a call from Kathy Anger, the city manager, and she was like, "Hey, Adam, if that General Motors plant closes, we're going to lose $6 million and we're going to bankrupt." And I was like, "Oh, okay, that's a, that's a big problem." You know, just like $20 million budget, $6 million hole, that's it? And so I got on the horn, right? And so started having a conversation with former Mayor Archer of the city of Detroit. He told me to call Senator Levin and I called Senator Levin and he's like, "Hey, look, there is no plant closure. You are working on the next product line." And I said, "No, they announced that the plant is..." He's like, "There is no plant closure. You are just working on the next product line." And so he's like, "You got to get a meeting in the next 24 hours with the city of Detroit, the city of Hamtramck, DGC, MEDC, the governor's office, the UAW, General Motors. Got to have this in-person meeting tomorrow." I was like, "Oh, okay, I can do that. I can do that. I can do that." And so I had to introduce myself to all these people because they'd never heard of me because I had been a state senator for 48, not even 48 hours at that point, like 24 hours I've been in this role. But that Wednesday, we're running this meeting in the Senate Dem Caucus Room and we met daily till we met weekly till we met monthly until they were like, "All right, we're going to build an electric Hummer." And I was like, "Guys, if you're going to lie to me, you could think of a better lie than an electric Hummer." And they're like, "No, just..." They're like, "Don't tell anybody." I was like, "Nobody's going to believe me. There is no..." I could tell anybody, no one is going to believe me. And so I'm keeping this secret and then they're like, "All right, watch, you know, there's going to be a commercial. Watch it." You know, I was like, "All right, great." And I was like, "I'm going to get one of these electric Hummers." And they're like, "Oh, it's going to be $130,000. I'm not getting one of these electric Hummers." "Are we going to make an affordable option?" And they're like, "Oh, yeah, the affordable option comes out in three years." I was like, "Well, how much is that?" "79." "I'm not getting..." So it's like, "That's the affordable one is the $79,000 one?" I was like, "All right, cool. I'm glad they're making them here, right?" And so when President Biden was here at the now Factory Zero plant announcing the Build Back Better initiative, I was sitting front row center, like I was literally sitting front row center because I was able to help make that happen. And so the reality for communities like Hamtramck is the only way that we're going to get to solvency is by creating more jobs and developing the space into a space where you have a more robust tax base, right? So yeah, it's great that we maintain Factory Zero and that's going to be hugely important. But we've got to make sure that the next set of battery manufacturing spaces and spinoffs are here, that the design space that accompany that plant are here in Hamtramck, are here in Hyman Park, are there in Detroit as we talk about the restaurant space. I mean, Hamtramck was hit extremely hard by the pandemic because there are a lot of restaurants that have not opened back up yet. Hoping that some of them do, you know, still missing some of our foods, you know? But, you know, we are all missing those spaces. We all need those businesses to come back or to be replaced. And that is how we rebuild Hamtramck. Hamtramck is the most densely populated city in the state. And the thing that we can do most to increase the dollars that the city brings in is by having increased property values. And what does that mean? It means that we actually invest in communities like the city of Hamtramck, right? So I've been working really hard on getting dollars to the city to address the lead pipe issue. Because, you know, as the father of two little kids who both had elevated levels of lead, that's not the thing that you want to move into. And so we've got to address it. And, you know, there's some state dollars that should be coming to the city to address some of those. And we're going to, and I'm going to continue to work hard for at this level and forever as we work on doing those kinds of things. But some, we've got to invest in the overall built infrastructure. We've got to make sure that there are real development programs that allow you to see real new development in the city of Hamtramck. When was the last time you saw a new house was built in Hamtramck?
I was going to say, yeah.
Yeah, but how many, right? Right? And so, you know, it's saying, "All right, well, we need new housing stock because the way people live is different, right? So Hamtramck is the most densely populated city in the state. Some of that's got to be multifamily and a different kind of multifamily. Not multifamily because you're poor, right? Like the old standard was, "You build multifamily for people who can't afford..." No, it's just some people who would rather live in a multifamily space. And you have an incredibly walkable community like Hamtramck. You've got to build around that investments in real transportation infrastructure, right? So as we talk about transit oriented developments, we talk about investing in bus, rail and all those kinds of things. That's going to be the kind of things that make Hamtramck the type of community that you all have chosen to live in because it's valuable. And because it's a unique space, right? Like there are very few walkable cities. You can walk to any place in Hamtramck. Well, I mean, I can walk to, you know, you can walk around, right? And you can find just about everything you need. It's a city unto itself, right? Like there are a lot of places where you can't find any turmeric, but you can find turmeric in Hamtramck, right? Like you're looking all around the metro area and you can find turmeric in the city of Hamtramck at 9:30. And those are the kind of things that people want to be able to do, right? That you can go buy fresh bread and, you know, on Fat Tuesday when it's time to get punch keys. And everybody's like, "Oh, it's so great. I can get these things." It's like, "Yeah, bro, come back tomorrow. They have them every day. They're there every day. I'll get you..." You know, it's other places you can only get them one time a year and they're not as good. But it's like, "Go get some punch keys tomorrow, right? Like I go to New Palace, I get fresh bread too." Like those are the kinds of things that you have the opportunity to take advantage of in a city like Hamtramck that we have got to continue to promote and build upon. As we talk about this Ukrainian refugee crisis and where folks are going to resettle, Hamtramck has always been an open and inviting space for folks coming from places that are experiencing terrible tumult. And there are a lot of places like that in the world, right? Hamtramck has always been a space where people were like, "My first foray into this country comes right here through Hamtramck." There's a huge opportunity for that as the world's largest country has invaded the largest country in Europe. And it's destabilized not just Ukraine and Western or Eastern Europe, but Northern Africa, Africa, Western Africa, tons of spaces all across the world. And so it's really important that Hamtramck continue to be a space that is open to refugees and immigrants. And as we do that, we'll see huge continued investment, right? So new Americans are some of the most enterprising folks that we see. Their entrepreneurial spirit is incredibly high and Hamtramck has been able to benefit greatly from it. And small businesses are the lifeblood of any community. That's why Hamtramck is continuing to grow. And if we compare that with real investments in entrepreneurship programs and programming and access to capital, you'll see the kind of boom that made Hamtramck a special community in the past and continues to make it the place that you want to live today.
If there are no other questions, I have one more.
Go ahead.
Since that, going back to the city finances, the, it looks like the jail is going to close. That's going to cut another million dollars out of the city budget, out of the income. Is there anything that the state can do in order to help the city gain some other funds to exist? Because otherwise, in a year or two, the city is going to go bankrupt again. And the financial manager probably would be appointed again. And at that point, the people in the city will have no control over the destiny basically because the financial manager has a lot more power than the city government.
Well, it's my expectation that Governor Whitmer will get reelected and I have every confidence that she will not be appointing emergency financial managers or financial managers or any of the like. So if your biggest concern is that, then you probably want to continue to see Governor Whitmer in office because I don't believe she is going to be in the appointment of emergency manager space. As you talk about the overall finances in that space, our jail population should continue to decrease. Our prison population should continue to decrease. As we talk about those spaces, it's going to be critically important that we find real plans to rejuvenate those spaces and reactivate them. And so no space and no way in the world should a community's primary tax base be built around jails and spaces like that. We just got to find alternatives and it starts with innovation. It starts with spinning off spaces from Factory Zero. It starts with making reference to the incredible, you know, economy and economic engines that we have here. One of the biggest things that we're going to have to start to do is managing our agribusiness space. So I've been having a conversation with a significant number of the agricultural folks from some of the more rural parts of Michigan. Because over the pandemic, we saw one huge hiccup in our food system. Does anybody remember what it was?
Chicken?
Yeah, why, why were we having so, why were there so many challenges with meat, getting meat? Processing, 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 processing. Well, that's a good thing that we can do here. I was joking with Dan Carmody who runs the Eastern Market. Wolverine Packing is the largest slaughterhouse for sheep. And he was joking of like, "That's like being the world's largest midget." It's a small, you know, it's a small niche part of their business, but they are the biggest and the best at it. And so it's talking about, "Well, how do we do more cattle slaughtering? How do we do more preparation for other things, right? So does anybody know that Michigan is one of the largest producers of sugar? Everybody know that? Yeah, because you're like, "Man, how do you get sugar?" Sugar primarily comes from two things, sugar beets and sugar cane. And we grow a lot of sugar beets. And so if we grow a lot of sugar beets, how do you process those? Where do you process those? How do you make the agricultural products that we grow in rural communities into the fixed kind of commodities that come out at your grocery store? And doing a lot of those from a more local standpoint is going to be critically important. And we can do those kinds of things here in Hamtramck. We can, you know, the proximity to rail lines, the proximity to Eastern Market and to Michigan's overall agricultural space is going to be critically important. And especially as we start to think about how we do a better job of sourcing our food more locally and closely, that's going to be a critical component of the answer.
Could you, could you speak a little bit about the support that you have helped provide for arts and culture specifically in Hamtramck? And how that, those goals would shift once you're in Congress?
Awesome. Well, so I think in the first one, I'll play a little bit of a joke. But so I did, you'll know, no one will believe this, but I did improv at Planet Ant because, and not because I was trying to be funny, right? Like I'm not funny. Like everyone in class is like, "Hey, I took this class because I want to be a stand-up comedian" or so and so and so. Does anybody want to guess what my answer was?
I was thinking?
No, I was like, "You know what? I read an article about how the core skill in improv is empathy." And I was like, "I would like to do a better job at empathy." And people were cracking up. They were like, "That is hilarious. You're going..." And I was like, "No, no, I'm serious." I wanted to better interact with humans. They're like, "Dude, that's weird." I was like, "I'm here though, right?" So as we talk about arts and culture, that's one of the biggest values of Hamtramck has, right? Like we joke about Hamtramck having a robust bar scene, you know? I used to sit on the MEDC Subcommittee on Appropriations. And that's a space where we sent out a lot of arts and culture grants where Hamtramck receives a lot of those kinds of things because it's what makes Hamtramck a cool city, a cool place to be and why you've seen a vibrant and young folks space. So Richard Florida used to talk about the creative class and how if you can bring in these people who want to do cool things and other people will want to be around them, right? This idea that if there is a cool art scene, that people who are less cool will want to be around those art cool people, right? And trying to balance those two things. And Hamtramck has been a space that is cool, that young folks want to move into. And as we talk about federal investments and how you do the placemaking strategies necessary to make these things work, it's those Main Street initiatives, right? It's saying that we value arts and culture as an economic driver, not as a, "Hey, man, I like that art, right?" So like, "Have you ever seen that art? That's cool." Like, what do you see when you look at it? I see people investing, right? I see people who are saying, "Hey, this is a product that we want to be around, that we want to grow." You know, artists take spaces that were other people's trash and they make them cool, right? Like they make them into unique spaces because they have a vision that is atypical, right? Like they see something in a space that we didn't see, right? Regular people go into a garage and they're like, "Ooh, this is dirty." And, you know, artists are like, "Oh, man, this is going to be a super cool, you know, like restaurant." So you remember the first time you went to a restaurant and it had big glass garage doors? And you were like, "Oh, that's cool." Some artists probably just, they just bought an old auto parts place and were like, "This is going to be cool. We go do this." And people were like, "Yeah, man." And now you see people just putting those things in. All of those come from real investments in arts and culture because it creates a place. It creates a unique restaurant, a unique experience that you can't get somewhere else, right? Those are the kinds of things that define a community like Hamtramck. From a community like Allen Park or Detroit or Hazel Park or Harper Woods or Highland Park, right? It's in Hamtramck, you get this field. In Allen Park, you get this field. In Harper Woods, you get this field. And those are the reasons that you go to those spaces, right? So I was over in Liver, over on Liverno and Avenue Fashion. We've all seen how fundamentally different that community looks because of an incredible investment in local small businesses, right? The streetscape was designed for people to walk. And so do you know what you see? People walking. Now, people were very upset while all that construction was going on, right? Like nobody was happy during construction time. But everybody's, I mean, maybe not everybody, but the majority of people you see over there are like, "Oh, this is, this is cool, right? Like they changed the way the sidewalks work so that you could have dining in the summer." You know, as we talk about where Hamtramck is going and how those things happen, it's melding the two. And at the federal level, you've got to invest in the kind of infrastructure projects necessary to make those kinds of things happen. Because as we've talked about, the city of Hamtramck does not have the dollars that are going to be necessary to make whole-scale streetscape improvements, to do the kind of infrastructure changes and to invest in the kind of small business lending that will promote those kinds of things and the movement in the spaces. But I've always been 100% committed to doing that in the past and will continue to do so in every sector as we think about that. Because our investment in infrastructure, as the Build Back Better initiative has made it clear, is more than just the pipes that run below us. It's the people infrastructure that matter the most. And, you know, that leads into the thing that I am probably most passionate about the Build Back Better initiative, which was the childcare credit, right? So I talk to people all day, every day and they're like, "We just can't find enough employees. We can't..." Well, people can't find where to put their kids, right? So I have two little kids. My daughter is four. My son is a year and a half old. Well, I guess I don't know why he's a year and a half and she's only four, but yeah, anyhow, they're three years apart. And as we talk about why that's so important, it's because during the pandemic, there were months and months and months where every job lost was lost by a woman and every job gained was gained by a man. And that's incredibly, one, disconcerting. It's a terrible narrative, but it's the practical reality of men making more money than women for doing the same job. Because you look at two household, you know, two family or two income earner families where if one person is making a dollar doing the same job, the other one is making 65 cents. Who's going to stay at home? The person making 65 cents. Because your household can't go from making a dollar 65 to making 65 cents. You struggle going from a dollar 65 to a dollar, but going from a dollar 65 to 65 is real hard. And when you talk about the overall cost of childcare in the state of Michigan, median cost is $10,000. You have two kids and you make $18,000, $19,000. Then what that means is you're working for nothing. You are working literally just to pay for childcare. And there are a lot of people who are unwilling or unable to do that. And so as we talk about where we are going as a state, as a community, it's critically important that we prioritize allowing people to actually get to work. Because there are all these folks who are saying, "Well, I can't hire anybody." Yes, you can't hire anybody because as a state, as a community, we are struggling to make sure that people are able to go to work. Brother, how's it going?
Good. How about yourself?
Doing excellent. Thanks for coming over on this very sunny day. We're doing question and answer stuff. If you've got some, I'm very happy to take them.
I'm sorry?
If you've got a question, I'm very happy to take, say a question. I know you just walked in. That's what we're doing right now. We're doing question and answer.
Well, actually, I do.
I like it.
Okay, couple of issues actually. Right now, everybody's, my sources tell me that your plan was to run for US Congress.
I am running for Congress.
That's correct. Okay. And that you came here as a second choice as opposed to campaigning someplace else due to... I'm just telling you. Okay, because I understand it's all of it. I'm just telling you, okay, because I understand this, all of it might not be true. I totally get it. And I want you to call me on the parts that you think are incorrect. Okay, as I'm gonna call you on the parts that I think are incorrect. Also, but what we are understanding is that, uh, the districts have been reconfigured by the dominant party in Michigan, the Republican Party.
So the districts this time were drawn by independent citizens or district commissions. So for the first time in Michigan's history, neither Democrats nor Republicans drew the districts and so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question about that. Like, for example, how do you determine if somebody's really independent aside from them telling you that? So, uh, because I call myself an independent, but I can base that on, on certain things because of the way I reject certain principles coming from each party. But in typical, uh, uh, political, uh, networking, it's almost impossible to get somebody who isn't partisan. And I mean, you're, you're there, you're in Lansing. You also know how it works. If you take this position on this issue, you are now part of that team or this team. So, uh, my issue to you, sir, is that you have been accused word on the street as being a spokesman for Enron. In the pocket, this, this is, this is what it said?
I don't even know who Enron is.
Oh, you don't? It was a debacle, what, 20 years ago?
I'm sorry?
Enron was a debacle like 20 years ago?
No, that's not a debacle 20 years ago. Enron is the name of a company, ma'am, and is in existence today. And I was saying that, uh, I'm not talking about a debacle or a specific situation. I'm talking about, about, uh, campaign finance.
I don't know who Enron is. What are you talking about?
Okay, good. Well, it was Big Oil?
Are you talking about Enbridge?
The sources gave me Enron as, as, as you were.
Oh, I remember this. I was like, in high school? Nah, brother.
Okay. Well, again, this lady just seemed to be, uh, committed to distracting me from my point. Because I'm not talking about something 20 years ago. I've only lived in Highland Park for four years, okay? When you took office, I had never heard of you. And again, I didn't even know who you were until, until just recently, you know, the last several months. But the issue had been that when you became, uh, once you were elected, that the Big Oil companies got you to become a spokesperson for them. Maybe they used the word Enron and maybe they, they, they were referring to Enbridge. Or maybe they were just, uh, maybe that was just, uh, uh, a generic phrase for Big Oil. Okay, uh, okay, so I don't wanna get caught on technicalities because obviously I don't know. I am asking, uh, how, for example, right now, a lot of people are blaming the Democratic Party for the cost of a gallon of gas today. A lot of us believe that we are not using our resources, that they are being shortchanged by Lansing and Washington. By where, by wherever they can throw up an obstacle and that now you are represented, are representing, uh, some of the Big Oil companies. I would like you to, uh, uh, address that, sir, but, uh, also.
Wait, let's, let's start there. So what's the first question?
The first question is, do you, uh, uh, is Big Oil one of your donors?
No, I haven't received any money from Big Oil.
Okay, I, I, I will accept your answer.
You can, you can also look at my campaign finance report. It came out last week. There is not a single contribution from Big Oil, so.
Thank you. And, and again, listen.
No, no, you're good. You, you can't, you should feel comfortable asking what you.
I, I realize that, but I can understand how this could take a confrontational tone.
No, brother, you, you're here. You're supposed to, you're supposed to feel comfortable.
Thank you. And I feel comfortable.
You live in the district, ask me questions.
Feel like I was coming at you, uh, coming at you to.
I asked you to ask a question.
Thank you, thank you. You did, and I am. So that's why.
What's your name? Let me.
I'm Barry Alvin, Minister Barry Alvin.
Very nice to meet you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So is your church in Highland Park too? You said you live in Highland Park?
Uh, that's correct. I live in Highland Park.
Okay.
And, uh, before that, I was still, well, you used to represent the Girl's Point, but.
I still do.
Right.
I got all of it.
It's current cycle, but if you're representing.
I still would too.
Okay.
Everything that I have right now is in that other district, although we're just talking about Senate stuff here. But the congressional, the 13th congressional district has every single bit of the second senate district.
Okay, excellent, excellent. So, um, so the other issue was, uh, was Black Lives Matter. Most of us understand that this organization has really played the community for support and financial gain. That the people who, who lead that organization literally took in billions of dollars and gave almost none to local chapters. That the organization, uh, and this is something that I can verify myself, that the organization represents haters of Christians. Haters of, of, of men and masculinity. I understand, I understand. But you, uh, on your, your billboard, you have hashtag Black Lives Matter.
I don't have a billboard.
Okay, I, I could actually pull that up, but I will, I will tell you.
Saw a billboard?
Okay, so.
I mean, I would like to see it. I, I haven't seen a billboard for me. That would be news to me. I would be excited that if someone had bought a billboard for me.
Do you support them?
So Black Lives Matter is more than just an organization. It is an idea. It is the idea that Black Lives do in fact matter.
Hashtag Black Lives Matter is, is, uh, supports that organization?
Again, there are lots of ways that that piece happens, right? So there is an organization that is Black Lives Matter. There is the idea that Black Lives Matter. And I certainly support the idea that Black Lives Matter as a black man, as someone who is engaged in the space and the work that they are continuing to do. So does every organization have its own set of challenges? Absolutely. But if we're talking about what's happening in the second senate district, the chapters of Black Lives Matter who are here are working on police reform. I've been proud to work with them on a variety of things. And organizations that support and collaborate with them across the board.
That was about, uh, as, as unclear a response as I could have possibly asked for. Actually, it was almost anticipated. I didn't wanna interrupt you because I really do respect you, sir. And I really was hoping for a clear, clear response.
I don't.
The, the part of, uh, Black Lives Matter that is posted on billboards that is hashtag, hashtag BLM, hate Christians. Hate, listen, maybe you don't know, if you don't know.
I, I think that that's a very interesting perspective. I don't know that it's particularly relevant to what we're talking about right now.
Because, as you said, you support the, some.
I mean, I support the fact that Black Lives Matter. I support the need for police reform. I support the organizations and the entities that are working on police reform, that are working on ensuring that unarmed black men are not murdered in the streets. That unarmed black women are not murdered, uh, are not killed in these spaces. And I think that's what we've been talking about when we talk about Black Lives Matter. It's what people are talking about when they're protesting. It's what happened in Chelsea. It's what's happening all across the state. As a matter of fact, the family of Patrick Laioya and a variety of folks, uh, were up in Lansing with a Black Lives Matter protest, talking about that situation just today. And so do I know if that was the formal organization or an individual chapter or just people who believe that Black Lives Matter? I don't. But I do know that I'm supporting the work that they do and that we continue to do so.
Yes, sir. In that, in, in that regard also, when you say men being murdered in the street, this is not the situation. I think, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna let you, uh, obviously, this is your form and you can, you can.
I mean, I think it's our form, right? So I'm here because I represent you. You all live in a district. I, I come to talk about that, but.
Yes, sir. My point, my point was that the, the premise that you just offered was that black men are being murdered, uh, uh, theoretically by the police department, but actually.
I said murdered in the street. I did not say by the police department. Certainly, that's what happened with Patrick Laioya. But when we talk about the advocacy that Black Lives Matter have done, it has not just been about police reform. It has been about literally that impact. And so it, it sounds like you wanna have a very nuanced conversation, which I'm absolutely happy to have with you. But I don't think that.
Well, I understand that at this point, you probably want me to sit down and shut up. But I, okay, well then, let me complete, let, let me complete my, my charge here because really and truly, black men are not being murdered. And, uh, and, and when they typically, listen, I've been in the streets deeper than anybody in here. I can promise you that.
You say so?
Yes, sir. I do say so.
Okay, not better than me, though.
Okay, I, I, I don't, I, I'm just trying to let you know this.
Let's, I'm gonna jump in. Just for, we wanna be just mindful of time cuz we're at 10 minutes. I just wanna make sure we address everybody too. So we can continue this, but I also would like to make sure we answer everybody's questions.
Again, now, can I complete what I was about to say? Because the whole point I, I was trying to make was that black men are not, when, when we are being murdered, because I have done my own dirt out here. I know what is going on out here. We not, we are not helping by, uh, forwarding that narrative that we are being murdered by anybody other than ourselves. What we need to do is tell people the truth, which is if you try to take someone's gun, then you have escalated your, your, uh, non-capital crime to a capital crime. If you pull it, if, I don't know if you care or not, a lot of my friends do. Okay, yes, sir. But if you, if you pull your gun and I try to take it, I have now escalated that to a capital crime. So, so basically, if we say that this man was murdered, uh, uh, for, for, for committing, for having the wrong license plate on his vehicle, that's just a lie.
Okay, let's, let's, I appreciate your feedback in this space. We're not gonna get into litigating the details of that space. If you have a point to make, please wrap it up.
Well, I already understood that you were actually gonna shut me down after a minute anyway. I wanted to challenge you to a debate. My name is Minister Barry Alvin. I've already contacted your office. I've left my information there. I've not received a phone call back from your office. But I would actually welcome you to actually go into nuance on your, on your, because I already understood. Once I came in here and started talking, the message was going to be, all right, that's enough. We spent too much time on you. Nobody in here is really worried about that. What we're worried about is too much negative information getting out and it reflects poorly upon yourself. That said, sir, I will leave you and, uh, and, and the rest, it's not that I don't wanna hear the, uh, the other issues, but I understand that.
Point made.
I, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate y'all for listening to me and letting me get that out.
Cool.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Okay. Uh, does anybody else have any questions? It's a very fun time. Yes?
So, you know, from flooding last year and the last several summers, um, our sewage infrastructure in this whole region is not supporting, um, smoothly removing the water. What are your plans to help address that?
So here's the thing, the, our system is not designed for climate change, right? Climate change is a huge problem. We, anyone who follows science or looks at the weather recognizes that, uh, climate change has significantly negatively impacted, uh, our community and particularly the built environment around it. Communities like Hampton that are older and especially dense like the city have a lot of, uh, issues when you get this flash rain scenario, right? So everyone is hoping that April showers are a little bit more chill this year, uh, but still wanna see, you know, but like, as we realistically look at it, our system was designed for between two and a half and three inches of water, uh, of rain. And so last summer, you saw six inches of rain, which meant that you were gonna have flooding. And if we ever had a situation where we had four, five or six inches again, we would similar have that level of flooding. And so I've been working with GLEWA and some of the other entities to try and address some of those things. But the reality is that they're gonna be deeply costly and long-term solutions over the next couple of years. Because as we replace our roadways and do those kind of things, we're gonna have to do not just bigger pipes, right? The situation in the past has always been bigger pipes. Uh, and the solution going forward has got to be more spaces so the water is retained in the space that it falls, right? So if we looked at each one of these, if we look at this area right here and said, all right, each one of those spots where there's a chair, it, it's a space where rain is gonna collect it in a bigger space, all that rain runoff has to go somewhere. And it goes into a combined sewer system. So stormwater and sewer go into the same space. When it hits too much, it goes in your basement, right? Which no one wants, but we're in lower spaces. So the only, there are only two things that we can do to address that either prevent stormwater from going into the sewer system, which would mean that all the streets would flood, uh, or provide for greater, greater access of water to be handled in place. And so those things are both gonna be having to happen going forward. You heard a lot of discussion about, uh, the freeway flooding and people like, well, it's just that the pumps failed. Well, the pumps failed because they weren't designed to take that much water, right? So has anybody ever walked up the stairs? Yes, you walked up the stairs. You go up that first flight of stairs and you're like, I'm, I'm cool, I'm cool. You hit the second step, the second flight and you're like, I'm still cool, right? Some of us are like, no, I'm not, I'm done. You hit the third flight and everybody is like, well, you know, it's a little bit feeling. You hit the fourth flight and someone, you know, there's only one person in the group who's still like, yeah, yeah, we're going upstairs. Everybody else is huffing. And at five, everyone is puffing. At six, even that person who's in really good shape is still feeling that level. And that's what our system was dealing with when it was being overtaxed with those inches upon inches upon inches of raining going in and growing. And so for us to fix those kind of things is gonna require huge investments. So in this last year's, or, uh, in the water supplemental, we got $60 million for, uh, some of the pumping stations to provide greater level of pumping, uh, for those spaces, uh, which is a stopgap. It's gonna mean that there's a little bit less flooding, but it does not solve the overall problem. Uh, so the answer is at the federal level, we're gonna have to invest billions of dollars nationally to ensure that this problem goes away. And it just hasn't happened yet. Uh, and so I'm really optimistic that we're gonna be able to get it done over the next five to 10 years. But the reality is if we had storms like we had last summer, this summer, we're gonna have results that are very similar. Ideally, not as bad, but will be very similar. And so, uh, there are some things that you can do in your individual basement. And one of the things that we're working with, in, with GLEWA is providing, uh, relief to homeowners that are at especially low areas and much more likely to do basement flooding. And so they have, um, I forget the name of, but it's basically a check valve so that your basement won't fill back up. But the problem with that is it costs about eight or $9,000, uh, per home. And it's a stopgap, right? So if right now I'm right here and the councilwoman is right here, if you can't fill up my basement.
No.
Her basement is gonna be filled up, right? And so it, it's just saying water is gonna find the lowest level and we've got to find ways to make sure that the lowest level is somewhere else. And that's why the freeways were the first places to flood because spoiler, they lowered it everything else, right? So if 75 wasn't right here, if Davidson wasn't right there, um, there would probably have been more flooding in Hampton and some of the associated communities and, and those backups, right? But it is really important that we clear those spaces and we're talking about all kinds of solutions, right? So some discussions have been, well, maybe we flood the streets, right? And so that sounds like a terrible idea until you're like, do you want civil water in your basement? We don't have great answers yet, but we're working on it.
Sue, I have kind of a follow-up question on that. I'd like, given our last ones, you can answer it shortly as you want. Is obviously, okay, so inevitably, five to 10 years, we're gonna see flooding. We're hoping it's less than we're hoping and we know hopes don't really mean that much. So on the back end of that is when it does flood, what can you help us provide to the residents?
Yeah, so what we're gonna do, uh, at the state level is to continue to try and set up relief spaces. So to do more in getting cleaning stuff out quicker, to better manage our emergency preparedness and more planning grants to local communities to address these kind of issues. Uh, I worked with a number of nonprofits last year to try and get information out as quickly as possible and to get some of the resources. But it's gonna be critically important that we also start to talk to people about what your basement looks like from a flooding standpoint. So how many people had flooding in their basement this year?
I don't have a basement.
Okay, but you know, I have, this is me personally, right? So this is me telling you what I had to do and my own personal struggle. I'm not suggesting that anyone have to do all these kind of things. But we had bad flooding a number of years ago in the basement. And so for the past four or five years, I had been, uh, you know, on a mission. You know how you on a mission? You know how you're on a mission at your house, you're like, this thing is not gonna break me, like, I'm gonna stop this water from coming in. Water just coming in, it's like, every time it rains, why is it, why is it raining, why is it raining, why is it raining? Literally, the week before that thing I had just finished, I built, you know, I built water, you know, gravel up around all my little window wells, had pitched away from the house and did all kinds of crazy drainage and all kinds of things. And I'm like, yeah, it didn't, it's all good, no rain in my basement. Because I, I was, I was out of town visiting my best friend when we had that big storm, because he, he's moving to, moving to Detroit, so I was literally just gone to Boston. And I'm like, man, I'm out of town, I'm like, I'm coming back, so I came back that, that next morning. And I'm like, but I'm gonna come home, and I'm talking to my wife, I was like, hey, wife, is the basement dry? She's like, oh, yeah, basement dry, I was like, did you check? She's like, yeah, yeah, it's good, it's good. I was like, cheers, we have accomplished this mission. Man, I came home, and the part that I knew was leaking was dry. The part I didn't know was leaking was not dry. And it was all just water. And then I came home, it was just water, and it rained again, right? It rained again, it's just water just gushing through the wall, just gushing and gushing and gushing. I was like, I hate the whole, like, I hate everything about this thing. The reality is, our infrastructure doesn't work, and we are asking, you know, we're going to people who can barely manage to keep their roof from leaking, and saying, hey, you know what you need to do? You should get a sump pump. Why are you going for a sump pump? You can't, right? This is the state's responsibility, and we have got to fix it. And we have got to fix it with transit, you know, with once in a generation, once in a lifetime, real investments in infrastructure. It's something I talked about four years ago, it's something that I work on on the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, and something I'm a hundred percent committed to doing now and going forward, because every time you see somebody digging, digging a new road, you know what they should also be doing? New drainage, but not just bigger pipes, right? Bigger pipes are not gonna solve this problem. We've got to separate the system, and we've got to figure out ways to make sure that when it rains, all the water that rains, so this lot right here, when you look out in Hampton, do people have big yards in Hampton? No, where do you think all that water goes in your basement?
Yeah, one of the best things they can do is clean their storm drains out that's on their street before it gets flooded, because if there's a house next to you that nobody's there, or there's an empty lot, nobody's cleaning that particular storm drain, and so you'd be surprised what they had. In our city, they had mattresses that had gotten in the drain and all kinds of stuff that was underneath. And so, once they cleaned it out, it kind of alleviated some of that. So that's a simple fix that you can do on your street with your neighbors, and they alleviate some of that stormwater runoff.
And we gotta find all of those kind of things, there's no silver bullet that's gonna help us this year. And we all have to figure out ways to really help each other and be supportive of each other in the near term, because when your basement floods, you need quick action to help clear that kind of space out. And we gotta think about those, but one practical, cheap, and easy thing that you can do for about, you know, between ten and seventy dollars, I mean, you can buy the hundred dollar pumps, but you, there's no real benefit. But between ten and eighty dollars, you can buy, you can buy on Amazon or at the local hardware store, little pump that'll go on the ground, that you can attach a garden hose to, the plug is right in, and it'll pump the water out of your basement. And so, getting something like that, that is short of a sump pump, can make a huge difference. And I would encourage everybody to get one, they're not super reliable, like, they're not, they're not gonna solve all your problems, but they could save some of the things that really matter on a, a big storm day, so.
Hello, Senator, thank you for coming.
Of course.
Welcome. I'm glad that you're working with the government, so close, especially the woman, Amanda, she's representing our government today. So, Hampton is a hundred-year-old city, and we never know about stores, how much we will receive of trade, so that is higher power than us. But also, infrastructure getting older, and there is a lot of work need to be done. And I really appreciate you, on behalf of our clergy, of Commonwealth Alliance clergy and organization, we appreciate your work, that you really have done so far, working with the former Mayor Mayewski, and now working with Mayor Galloway and council, council members team and city manager. I saw you many times, even at the council meetings, that you leave your businesses, and you come to attend to see what they need to help them. I really appreciate you, and whenever I contact you in your office, I got response immediately for anything I call them. Thank you for proclaiming our fasting day today, the twenty-first of April. And we appreciate the proclamation that you issued for, and recognizing our fasting day of this year in your district. So I will present it tonight at the Iftar dinner, I present the proclamation to our clergy, where we call worldwide people to fast, to join us in fasting today, not because of Muslims fasting today, but we see that the environment around the situations is not that good because of wars, especially Russia and Ukraine and many other countries that war is open, and so. And we fasting today particularly for peace, unity everywhere in the world. And that is a reason that we, as God Almighty, not only with supplication with prayer, but with actually fasting, because fasting is the strongest prayer that God after rewarding and accepting those fasting prayers. So that is the reason that we call world to fast today, and I'm personally in contact with many of our partners in, in whole world countries that they're participating in our ministry on Fridays in calling, in, in the prayer community, as you attend as well. So we have representatives from India, Japan, Europe, Russia.
You have everybody on those calls.
Yes, and those people spreading messages in their countries, asking people to fast today. Again, thank you for all you do, and thank you for this wonderful proclamation. And regarding a safety in our city and state, actually, in this nation, that's why we need you in Congress, that you have more power to, to enforce laws and to support our police departments everywhere. So there is always between, between some police officers and residents will be miscommunication, and that unfortunately pays with life from one or another side. And that is really unfortunate to see in, in this beautiful country that we don't have that kind of control. I would like to ask you to support the police departments with an extra some training, that police officers can be trained, and that they are, that they should be, they should be respected even more in our communities, that when they come into, when they come, when they're responding for car, for any reason, that they are safe at least from me, if I'm calling officers, they come into my house, at least they are safe from me, because I'm calling them, I'm not safe. So they have both sides, they have a suspect and victim to be afraid of. So that's why they have to carry gun and ready to shoot. So that's not really easy for us to not be educated enough how to work with police. And we should, in this situation particularly, we need to feel ourselves all as officers responsible for safety in our families, in our communities, because if you don't protect your family, no one else will before you do it. So I really thank you again, and I'm thankful again to Amanda, who has a woman for being here today and working with you, and this is that she will bring other council members along.
I, I know folks are at prayer right now.
People are praying and fasting, and also jobs, and their businesses, so can't blame. So we will do our best to enhance people for next time.
If there are no other questions, I just want to say thanks for everybody who came out, and I appreciate you enduring all the interest of today's meeting, and look forward to seeing you continue. So again, every Friday, we, our e-newsletter pops out. I appreciate Councilwoman for coming out, she's always very attentive and engaged and right on the space. I think I've seen her three times this week at this point. But it's really important that we stay engaged in this space, right? So I think during COVID, we all disconnected because we were trying to make sure that we were safe around spaces. And as we reintegrate amongst each other, it's gonna be critically important that we keep our eye on the prize, on the things that matter, and engage in these spaces, because we have very real things coming up, most especially this summer, as we talk about climate change and infrastructure and police reform, or the lack thereof. And, you know, these elections, it's really gonna be impactful. And as we all know, there are folks who are gonna seek to divide us and ensure that we do not have the opportunity to participate in these spaces. So I again appreciate you coming and spending a beautiful Thursday evening with me. And if you got more questions, I'm happy to stick around, but thank you so much for coming out.